Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the May 2020 Planning Commission meeting. This time I call the meeting of May 5th, 2020 to order. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held online. Applicants are hearing via telephone and the public will be able to participate in the public hearing portion of the meeting by phoning in at 814-833-1111, extension 380. The commission will keep testimony open until it receives no further telephone calls in the matter before it. Next, we'd like to do the Pledge of Allegiance. All please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll go over the introduction of the Planning Commission members and our support staff. In the room here tonight, I am Gene Stromeyer, the Chairman of the Planning Commission, and with me is Pete Cabea, over here on my left. He and I are the only members of the Planning Commission that are onsite. Members on the telephone are Dave Skelly, Doug Prozan, and Linda McCabe. And our support staff that is remote also is Matt Wallwinder, the Director of Planning and Development, Matt Puzz, Zoning and Development Officer, and Jennifer Herniason, the Township Council. The Milker Township Planning Commission is a recommending body that hears testimony, asks and answers questions, deliberates, and passes our recommendations on to the supervisors who make the final decision brought before us. The land developments and conditional use applications discussed tonight, if acted on by the Planning Commission, will be considered by the township supervisors that their regular meeting be held on Tuesday, May 26th, at 7:00 p.m. The rezoning discussed tonight, if acted on by the Planning Commission, will be considered by the township supervisors that their regular meeting be held on Tuesday, June 9th, at 9:30 a.m. If you are calling in tonight with a comment, you will need to begin by stating your name and address for the record. Also, there's a delay built into the live stream. To prevent echoes and confusion, please mute the volume of the meeting video while on the phone. Next, from the Planning Commission, I will call for a motion to accept the minutes of March 3rd's meeting as written.
This is, I recommend it be accepted.
Okay, we have a motion for acceptance. Do I have a second out there?
I'll second.
Okay, Linda McCabe seconds. Linda McCabe seconds the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Move on to the subdivision land development. The first item on the agenda, the applicant has asked the consideration this plan be postponed until further notice. That was for Gerlach's Garden and Floral Center, so we won't be discussing that tonight. So, the next item on is Greenleaf Corporation Airport Hangar. It's a land development plan to show the construction of a 12,000-square-foot hangar with associated stormwater facilities and parking spaces located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Asbury Road and West 12th Street at the Erie Municipal Airport Track, index number 147-004. Good evening.
Hello, Steve Hellmy here.
Yes, how are you doing? This is Gene Stromeyer, the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Please state your name and address for the record, and then describe your plan.
Thank you. Steve Hellmy with Dice and Hellmy Engineering, 105 Needville Street, Edinburgh, PA. I'm here tonight on behalf of Greenleaf Corporation to present a plan for an airport hangar on the property of the Erie Regional Airport Authority of 12,000 square feet. Can I ask, before we proceed, there's another representative of Greenleaf Corporation, Mark Luxwick. Has Mark called in, or have you called him?
No, we have not.
Okay, I think he was under the impression that you were calling him.
Stand by a second.
We can only have one person?
You can only do one at a time.
Okay, yeah, we can only do one at a time.
Okay, I apologize.
That's right.
I'm under the impression we'd both be on, but...
That's right.
I'm hoping Mark is at least able to listen in via the video feed. Anyway, I'll proceed with the presentation without him.
All right.
So, again, Greenleaf Corporation is proposing construction of a 12,000-square-foot aircraft hangar on the property of the Erie Regional Airport Authority. The access for the hangar will be off of West 12th Street at a location just west of where the North Coast Air operation is.
All right.
This is a leased area that will be on property of the Airport Authority that will be leased by Greenleaf Corporation. The project consists of the 12,000-square-foot hangar and associated parking and driveway entrance, as well as stormwater management facilities. We have submitted the plan to the engineering office, and it is under review by the engineering office for stormwater management purposes. And we are asking for the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval of this land development plan.
Okay, to begin with here, I'll go first, I guess, here. You are missing, on the drawing here, you're missing the Milkerick index number and the distance to the nearest fire hydrant.
Yes, Mr. Puzz had pointed that out to us in an email that we received yesterday.
Okay.
And we will certainly modify the plan to provide both of those pieces of information.
All right. And as a reminder, you'll need an HOP from the PennDOT, too.
It's our understanding from the Airport Authority that an HOP already exists for that driveway. It is a reconstruction of an existing driveway that formerly served a service station on that property.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay, now, see if there are any questions from anyone else on the commission.
I do not have any questions.
This is Dave Skelly. This is Dave Skelly. I remember the service station, it was a Texaco. Okay, just one question. It's a hangar or parking? When I read this and saw airport hangar, I assumed it was for planes. So, it's for automobiles?
No, it is for a plane.
It is for...
Yes, sir.
Okay. They look like parking spaces for cars. Very good.
The parking that is shown on the plan is available to meet the township's parking requirement. When the airport departs, there's obviously space in the hangar... I'm sorry, when the airplane departs, there's obviously space in the hangar to accommodate the additional parking spaces of the guests of the hangar.
There's normally only going to be one airplane parked in here?
That's a question for Mark, who's not able to be on the line, I take it, but I think that is the intent.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
This is Doug Prozan. Yeah, I'm still confused about these 18 parking spaces within the building. Is that simply to meet the code requirement? But from a practical standpoint, you don't need it?
That is correct.
Anybody know how the township feels about something like that? This is Doug Prozan again.
We did discuss this matter with Mr. Puzz, and I believe that... I'll let him speak for himself, but I believe that he was willing to allow it.
This is Matt Puzz. The ordinance does allow for parking to be inside a structure, the required parking. As long as it's being provided, I don't see an issue with it conflicting with the ordinance.
Linda, do you have any...
This is Dave again. I guess it depends on how many planes fit in what's left of the hangar. It just seems like it's a lot of parking spaces for one, or maybe two, small planes.
Yes, Matt Puzz again. The ordinance requires one parking space for every 500 square feet of storage for warehousing. The calculation comes out to, I believe, 24 parking spaces.
Of which are six outside there.
Hi. Hi. Is this a proper use then for perhaps a variance?
Oh, is that directed to me? There is potential for a variance, but I mean, that would be up to the zoning hearing board to grant.
Well, this is Doug Prozan again. Let's just make sure, let me run through this, make sure I understand what you're saying. If the planes are gone, assuming there's more than one, if the planes are gone, then the people on the planes would park inside the building. If there are no people in the planes, then the planes would park inside the building, and therefore you don't need any parking? Is that kind of what you're saying to me, or us?
This is Steve Hellmy speaking. Yes, that is correct. Quite frankly, Greenleaf Corporation does not anticipate needing any more spaces than the six that are shown outside. But to meet the township requirement, we're demonstrating that we do have the 24 that are required.
Okay.
Okay. Well, this is Dave Skelly. Wouldn't it be preferable then to have more space for planes as opposed to space for parking in a building that... Parking that you won't need? Wouldn't it make sense to have a variance that would reduce the number of spaces to allow you to park more planes?
This is Steve speaking again. I agree that we don't need the number of parking spaces that are required by ordinance. However, in order to facilitate the process, and so we wouldn't have to apply for a variance, we were willing to show that we do meet the ordinance as written, even though we don't anticipate needing to use those spaces inside the hangar.
This is Dave again. So practically speaking, what's shown on this plaque that are parking spaces won't be used at all, and that part of the hangar that does not have parking spaces is where X number of planes will park. And that means the rest of the area in the hangar that is designated as parking really, practically speaking, won't be used at all.
No, that is incorrect.
That's incorrect, yes.
Yes, Greenleaf doesn't intend to use all the space within the hangar for storage of aircraft. The parking will be available for when an aircraft departs, the guests can use the space inside.
If needed.
I see. Okay. Seems overdone for the parking. Thank you.
How about Linda McCabe? You got any comments or questions?
I don't.
Okay.
I understand what Dave is saying, but I don't have a whole problem with whether they want to do it.
Okay, no further...
This is Doug Prozan.
Yes, sir.
This is Doug again. So, I'm going to make the assumption that if this doesn't work out, you're not going to have any business anyways, because these people aren't going to use the plane if they can't have a place to park. So, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy, I guess.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, then this matter is now open for public comment. If you wish to make a comment on the plan for the airport hangar, please call 833-1111, extension 380. We'll wait a few minutes here to see if there's any callers. We have no calling in, and no one calling in with comments or questions. We thank you for your time tonight, sir. And if you want to know what the results were, you can hang around on the phone, on the system here, or somebody can call the engineering office tomorrow morning after 8:00 a.m., and they'll be able to fill you in with the information, okay?
I appreciate that. Just referring to the letter that was sent to the applicant, I think the letter asked that we remain on for the duration of the meeting, or are you suggesting that we disconnect at this point?
You can hang on for the rest of the meeting if you so desire, sir. Yes, absolutely, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Okay, having heard no more, no calls, we'll now move on to our next item. Thank you for the applicant. All right, the next item is MCH Corporation Off-Site Parking. It's a land development plan to show the construction of a 163-foot... I'm sorry, 163-space parking lot with associated stormwater facilities located at the corner of Dudley Street, Peach Street, and Zimmerley Road in track 346. Good evening.
Hi, Gene.
How are you doing?
Mike Sanford here.
Yes, sir. How about Mike? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, Mike Sanford, 472 Atlantic Avenue. And also with me is Mike Redloss, along with the applicant.
Okay. All right. So, tell us what you want to do here.
Sure. What we would like to do, the property is located at the intersections of Dudley, Zimmerley, and Peach Street, right on the corner, the site of the former Biding Hope Church. And there's an existing parking lot on the property, and our land development plan is to expand that parking lot for off-site parking for other use. And we received a variance from the Milkerick Zoning Hearing Board back in March that allowed that variance, and that was variance 20-08. The existing driveway access is off of Dudley and Zimmerley for the parking lots that are there, and that will be our access for the parking lot. We're going to have three driveways off of Dudley, as shown, and one driveway off of Zimmerley. We do our property, this property is zone C2, and it adjoins residential to the west, and so we do have the required 40-foot planting strip along the Westerly side and the required plantings as well. Within the parking lot itself, the ordinance does, of course, require end caps and planting islands, and we've proposed a plan that does meet the percentage requirement, and also we have the requisite trees in those islands. As far as sidewalks go, there are some sidewalks along this property's front edge, some on Peach, some on Dudley. They're kind of incomplete... I'm sorry, some on Zimmerley. They are kind of incomplete, so part of our plan is to have sidewalks from Dudley, Peach, and Zimmerley, so all of the front edge would have sidewalks. And Erie County Planning did review our plan and signed off on it, so we're here tonight requesting approval of our plan.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to the questions from the commission. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Sanford?
There was, this is Dave. There was a concern that the fire, the distance from the nearest fire hydrant was not on the original plaque. Has that been corrected?
Yes, I did add that revision today, and I emailed it over to Matt and Puzz. I will deliver copies of that tomorrow or so forth, but yes, I did add that hydrant. The nearest hydrant is at Zimmerley and Perkins.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Questions or comments from the Planning Commission? Okay, no further comments, then this matter is now open for public comment. If you wish to make a comment on the rezoning request... I'm sorry. If you wish to make a comment on the plan for an off-site parking, please call 833-1111, extension 380, and we'll wait a couple minutes and see if there are any callers. Okay, we've been waiting about two minutes here. We have no, no one has called in yet. We'll now move to our next item. Thank you very much, applicant.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda here is rezoning. It's for Scott and Susan Griffiths for property located at 3720 Zook Road, now zoned R1 Single Family Residential, asking for property to be classified to C1 Local Commercial, Good evening.
Hi. My name is Dr. Scott Griffiths. My address is 2640 West 38th Street, Erie, PA 16506. I apologize. What was the street address, or the street name? The address is 2640 West 38th Street, Erie, PA 16506. Thank you.
Okay, can you explain to us your zoning request?
Yes, my wife, Susan Griffiths, and I are the current business owners of Griffiths Eye Center. It is an established, well-respected business that has been at its current location on the corner of West 38th Street and Zook Road under our current ownership for 23 years. Our business is zoned C1 Local Commercial. Our business and building are adjacent to 3720 Zook Road. We are requesting that 3720 Zook Road be rezoned from its current classification of R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Local Commercial as part of a purchase agreement for the property to match Griffiths Eye Center's current property classification of C1 Local Commercial.
Hi, I'm Susan Griffiths. We're pursuing this rezoning so that we can provide parking for our staff behind Griffiths Eye Center. This would provide more and better parking for our patients at the front and side of the office. Having our staff parked behind the office building would open up more parking for our patients in front of the office. It would allow us to widen the parking spaces to make it easier for our senior patients to park and to get in and out of their vehicles. Our goal with this request is better quality parking, along with ease of parking for our seniors and other patients. Our tentative plan to accomplish this is to tear down the residence at 3720 Zook Road and pave an area no larger than the current square footage of the current residence to allow for this additional parking. The entrance to Griffiths Eye Center would remain the same. The lot would include parking and green spaces. It would be professionally maintained in the same manner as the current lot at Griffiths Eye Center, and would include grass and trees. We're asking that this property be rezoned in order to provide the current business the additional space it needs to function better as a business in its current location. We have many patients in the immediate area and community that value our location but express frustration at times with our... express frustration at times with our parking. By adding this additional parking, it will allow us to serve the community better, and will not adversely impact the rest of the neighborhood. We feel that, we feel this change would increase the value of our property, which in turn would increase the value of the properties surrounding the business. Um, uh, 3720 Zook has a fence that runs along the north and west side of the property. Uh, the neighbors do not currently have a view or access to the property's backyard, so we feel there would be no change in their view. The fence would be maintained and, or replaced as necessary. Uh, we do not expect to have an increase in volume of traffic into the parking lot with this change. We're just trying to provide a better parking experience for, for our current customers.
This, this is Gene Stromeyer in the, uh, uh, meeting room here at the township building. Access to that parking area would be from your existing parking lot or from Zook Road?
Well, gosh, we anticipate, we would like to have it, um, the same entrance, the same entrance to the building as, uh, to the parking lot as we have now. We don't, we don't want to change any of that, we just want to expand the parking lot.
Okay.
We could get entrance to it from the, our 38th Street entrance.
Okay, so there would be no, you're, you're not anticipating having any entrance or exit from or onto, from or onto Zook Road?
Correct.
Okay.
We want our patients to park in front of the building because that's where the entrance is, so our employees would park behind the building.
Yeah, that's strictly before the employee. Right now, we have spaces directly in front of our building and on the west side of the building.
Yes.
Our employees currently park in the, on the spaces on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Occasionally, we have access patients, and there's not enough spots in the front of the building.
Right.
So we want, we would like this, to be able to park, have our employees park in the back of our building, um, which would open up the spaces on the west side of our current parking lot for, for patients to park in.
Okay, would your, and your employees would access the employee parking lot via the, you, the, through the existing lot, then you're saying?
Yeah, we feel we could off the existing lot on the west side, or even on the east side of the lot, make a connection over to the parking lot onto the 3720 Zook Road.
Right, okay, very good, thank you.
I mean, an, another option would be potentially keeping the same current driveway that's attached to the house on Zook Road, but I don't think that's necessary, and try to avoid any extra, um, traffic on the Zook Road. Everything could come through the front of the 38th Street entrance.
Okay, thank you. Uh, see if there are any questions from, or comments from the, the planning commission?
Uh, this is Doug Prozian, that, um, I would suggest that, that in your landscaping, you close off that, uh, drive, the existing driveway to the house, um, I'm sure that would keep the neighbors a lot happier too.
Right. That, that's perfectly fine and understandable, yep, we feel that everything could be come through the 38th Street entrance, and around our current billi- building to behind it. To close off the current driveway, um, from thirty, 3720 Zook Road.
This is Dave Skelly, um, so just for the record, the, the buffer against the existing two residential districts should this be rezoned, um, would be how many feet, twenty feet, count?
Yeah, this is Matt Puzz, yes, that is correct.
Twenty feet, alright, thank you.
You're essentially saying that the majority of this lot is going to be not parking lot, correct?
We felt that, um, the current house is approximately three thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
We know water is always an issue, I know if you pave a larger area, then water is a concern. We felt that we could pave just the, the amount of the, the same square footage as the house, and leave the large backyard in place.
However you, this is Pete Cabea, you have to have the twenty-foot buffer on the north side.
And the west side.
And the west side. Did you realize that?
No, didn't realize that, but I don't think that would be a problem.
Okay.
We're only looking for approximately eight additional parking spots.
Okay. Anybody else in the planning commission have anything?
Pete Cabea again, is that, is that?
Um, so, uh, this is Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Alright, this is Dave, um, just a question about the comprehensive plan to the, uh, staff. Um, the plan currently calls for it to remain, uh, a single-family residential?
Uh-huh, that is correct.
Matt Puzz?
Yes, yeah, this is Matt Puzz, that is correct.
Okay. Just wanted that to be clarified for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Linda?
No, I'm just curious as to if, have you, have they met with an engineer or anything about water runoff? I mean, that's a hill, it goes downhill. I would think there'd have to be some sort of retention or something. I mean, I'm not real, you know, I'm certainly no expert in that department, but it would stand to reason that an engineer would have to be brought in to make sure this is actually gonna work in that amount of space. Am I making sense?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Matt Waldinger.
Yes, sir.
From the township. Uh, I just wanted to point out that, um, you know, rezoning would be the first step if, after the rezoning was, uh, if it were to be approved by the supervisors, then the applicant would have to get a demolition permit for the building, as well as potentially a land development plan, and definitely a stormwater plan for any redevelopment of that site.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the planning commission? Okay, this matter is now open for public comment. If you wish to make a comment on a rezoning request, please call 833-1111, extension 380, we'll wait a couple minutes, see if there are any callers.
Mr. Stromeyer.
Yes, I am.
I received, this is Matt Puzz, I received a, uh, an email regarding this rezoning. Um, could I take this time right now to read it into the record?
Stand by a second, I think we have a, do have a call coming in, I believe.
Okay, okay, just let me know when I can, thank you.
I'll do that. Good evening.
Hello. Yes, my name is, uh, Kimberly Clear.
We need your address, Kimberly, please.
Okay, my, my address is 4855 Asbury Road, Erie PA 16506.
Alright.
And, uh, I'm calling regarding the, uh, rezoning of, uh, the Griffiths Eye Care. I'm actually a, uh, patient of Dr. Griffiths, and, uh, I actually just wanted to speak, uh, in regards to the current situation when parking, uh, and the difficulty it is, uh, to find parking at times. Uh, Dr. Griffiths does a wonderful job of, you know, trying to make sure that, um, all of his patients are comfortable, of course, but it, it is difficult, for sure, to find parking, um, and I, I just, I wanted to speak on that, um, that I think this would be a great addition. It seems that it would be a natural progression, um, of that corner and that area, um, to be rezoned from a residential area to, um, a commercial, um, so anyway, I, I wanted to make sure that, um, I made you aware that there is a problem, for sure, with parking, and I think this would just make a, a better functioning Mill Creek business. I love Mill Creek, I believe in Mill Creek, and, and, uh, we have to grow with our time, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time and what you all do, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good evening.
Hello. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you, I need your name and address, please.
Cheryl Adams, 3714 Zook Road.
Alright, thank you. Go on, go ahead.
Okay, so, several things, I am adamantly opposed to changing that to, um, commercial, because this is our neighborhood, the doctor's office is on 38th Street, there are no other commercial properties other than people's homes through down through 32nd Street. And the fact that we're gonna tear down a home that's absolutely, nothing wrong with it, that people can live in, and to tear down a pool, there's a pool inside a building there too, to put in ten parking spots, when you could just buy the spot, street, uh, right across the street on 38th and Zook, that's been for sale forever, let the employees park over there, cross at the light, you've solved your problem. But if this is approved, does the, uh, property become part of that corner lot, or will it be a standalone lot?
Matt Puzz?
Good e- uh, good evening, uh, this is Matt Puzz, uh, they would be required to, if they were to combine the lot, they would be required to, uh, record a combination deed of the Erie County Department.
So they would be, it would be one lot, then, not a standalone?
It would be one lot if they, uh, recorded the combination deed.
So how would we know that beforehand? Because if it's a standalone lot, and they tear down the existing structure to put in parking, then it becomes an accessory use, and you're not allowed to do that, because the structure would be gone. And when you put in, if you're taking down the house, if you go twenty feet from my property line to where they can put this parking lot, you're in, you know, really because our, you're like twenty feet into the house, so it actually isn't going to touch, it's not gonna have the same footprint as the house that's there, it's gonna have a totally different footprint, and then once you fill in that basement with whatever dirt or whatever, that's gonna change, and you're gonna have to fill in a pool, because there's an in-ground indoor pool, I mean, that's gonna, I already got water in my backyard. I mean, how much drainage, and what are they gonna do with all that water? Runoff, you know, and parking, they're gonna be plowing, and the salt from the snow, and everything else, I mean, that's at a higher elevation than my property.
When the time, when the time comes for this to happen, if, if this part of it does happen, and the, the zoning change is, uh, allowed or is approved, at some point down the road, they'll have to return to us with a land development plan, which will include stormwater management, uh, calculations, and a, 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 a plan for stormwater management to, to mitigate the, uh, water that may be landing on their parking lot.
Okay, so and how's that gonna affect, affect the tax structure? Like now, the, the property is like forty-five hundred dollars to the township and the school district, how's that gonna be affected if it goes from the R1 to the C1?
I have no idea, ma'am.
But anyway, so I vote no.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't get a vote.
Okay.
I vote no, I have a whole nother list of questions, but somebody else might have something to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. May I have your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name is Bill Wismer, I live at 301 Mill Fair Road in, um, Erie, Pennsylvania.
Yes.
And I'm calling about the, um, zoning, um, I'm a patient of, uh, Dr. Griffiths, and I also have, uh, my in-laws who are patients of his, and have a, uh, they have a greatly difficult time, um, uh, navigating the current parking situation, and this additional parking would be fantastic, it would be on the same level, and it would allow them to transport in and out of his office for, uh, for care. So I would greatly appreciate it if he could expand his operation and, uh, allow this additional parking to, uh, happen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great day.
You too, thanks. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Barbara Gilford. I live at 3620 Zook Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, ca- calling about this rezoning that I am also against. Um, I live to the north of Mrs. Adams that just called, and, um, she's well aware, I just had to have, um, my basement come and do drainage, which was a very, in my basement because of the water here. It was not a cheap, um, cost to have that done, and, um, I just, I, I don't believe expanding that is a necessity, they've been there for years, they've done fine with it, um, there's additional options for them to put in parking, and not to have this neighborhood turned into anything more commercial, um, I disagree with.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for your comment, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, goodbye.
Right. Good evening.
Hi, my name's, uh, Tim Coman, address is 4404 Crosswind Drive, and I just wanted to make a couple comments about the Griffiths Eye Center.
Go ahead.
Good to talk, uh, yeah, I think it makes sense to have a parking lot right next door for the employees, uh, with the homeowner said next door to that about parking across the street, I think that could be kinda dangerous on an intersection, quite a distance to walk. Um, the water problems she was talking about, I think you guys answered that right, engineers would come out, decide the right way for water to drain off, snow problems, salt running in regard, um, I think it just makes perfect sense there. I'm a patient there, and parking is just ecotactic at times.
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, this is Alice Neder, I live at 1526 High Street.
Hi, this is Alice Neder, I live at fifteen twenty-six High Street. And I just wanted to make a comment about the entering and exiting the property there at Thirty-Eighth and Zook. It's a nightmare as a, I travel Zook Road a lot and it's a nightmare because people are always coming out onto Zook Road and trying to cross Zook Road and head north. And so you have your three lanes of traffic and they're trying to cross those and you're right there at the light. I have the problem right now and I, I just, I do not see people not doing that. If they put in more parking, I think they'll go whatever way is the most direct to where they're heading. And I don't think they're gonna go out Thirty-Eighth Street to come down Zook. I think they're gonna try to go out Zook again and that's just gonna increase that traffic.
You're talking-
So I really would be a-
You're talking about from, from the parking lot to employee parking, the proposed employee parking lot?
Well, whatever they're calling it.
Yeah, yeah.
From Zook Road, they exit, there is a driveway there at Zook Road now and even customers I've seen come around and come out that way. And they're trying to cross all those lanes of traffic to head north on Zook. And I'm always traveling south on Zook, so you always gotta watch these people that are coming out of that lot so that you're not running into them because they pull out and you're right at the light. I mean, it's really close to the corner. It's not a good situation now. So I'm concerned about additional cars coming out of there.
The Griffiths, Griffiths has also already said that they're probably going to not be using that existing driveway, if you will, from the residence that they're now-
Right, there's an existing driveway at the house and there's always also an existing driveway at Griffiths property currently. So which one is it that they're not going to use?
Onto Zook Road?
That would be great.
Okay, all right.
You know, this is what I'm saying, that, that said, they say they won't use the one maybe at the house, but there's still one at their facility right now that's being used. So I don't see them closing off both driveways. Because then you have a problem at Thirty-Eighth Street. It's just all close to the corner.
Right, correct.
And I am concerned about the fact that Zook Hill runs downhill heading north and where is that water going? So.
Okay.
I guess I'm opposed to that. I think there's a lot of places that commercial property already is, it's empty of where they're at isn't big enough, then maybe they should look at that. But I'm opposed to changing the zoning on that.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Jean, this is Doug Prozian. Is that person still on the line?
No, she isn't.
Okay. Well, I wanted to know if they felt that maybe the existing driveway of the house would be a safer exit onto Zook than the one that Griffiths are now using on Zook? If they're gone, they're gone, I guess.
She's, yeah, it is farther, it is farther away from the intersection, probably a hundred feet anyway. Go ahead, Dave.
I was gonna say, if it was right turn only onto Zook, it wouldn't be so bad, but it'd be better to have it closed off, practically speaking, I think.
I, I believe so too.
I, I agree.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Lemay. I live at twenty-six seventeen West Thirty-Second Street and I oppose the rezoning. I don't really think I need to say much else.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Matt, are you with us? Matt Puzz?
Yes.
Go ahead with your statements and comments.
Okay, uh, like I said earlier, I received an email. I'll just read the email to you. My name is Thomas P. Roberts. I live at thirty-six thirty-five Zook Road. I am against the rezoning of thirty-seven twenty Zook Road. I would like it to stay a single family home. If the Griffiths need more room for their business, there are plenty of lots at the Old Hill Plaza on Thirty-Eighth Street. There is also a lot across the street from the office on the southwest corner they can use for parking. If you should need to talk to me, please call me at, I'll redact the phone number or email me at this address. Thank you for your time, Thomas Roberts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roberts, if you're listening. We'll wait a few minutes here to see if anyone else calls in.
We're good, Jean. We're good.
Okay, we've been waiting for about two minutes now. Uh, no more callers coming in, we'll move on to our final item. Thank you for the, to the applicant there. Uh, we appreciate it, your time.
Thank you for your time and expertise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the conditional use application. It's for Sergej, I'm gonna pronounce it Kodazian, for property located at thirty-five Peninsula Drive to install new signage in the RC Resort Commercial District. Is the applicant on the phone? Good evening, sir, ma'am.
Uh, hi, my name's Sergej Kodazian, owner of the Crazy Oven, he was picture. Hello?
Yes.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yep.
Okay, can you give us your name again and speak up a little bit louder, please, if you would? Give us your name and address, please. Your address, home address.
My name's Sergej Kodazian and my address, three zero one four Morning Sun Court. That's my home address and the business which, uh, I mean, we talked about, this is Crazy Oven, address thirty-five Peninsula Drive, Erie PH.
Yes, sir. Okay, you have been, we've been discussing this a couple months ago, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And at the time, we had requested, or your, I believe it was your wife talking to us, had said that she was going to, there was questions about the sign, the size of the sign, and the looks of the sign and so on. And if there-
Oh, I took all that information. It was a, uh, electric sign, twelve feet long and one foot, I mean, one foot by twelve feet. And I, I mean, I included picture of the sign, uh, from the left side and also I included a picture of the building. So, I mean, it's right on the top of the entrance. From the building itself, it doesn't take too much space and it would really help me because like with the prices for food now, it's both up and down all the time. And the price for menu is changing all the time too. And that would be, I mean, very, very help, big help for me so people can see what's going on at the moment, like what kind of special I can offer and what kind of food I can offer and, I mean, that's what generally I need that sign for.
Okay, we had discussed this, I believe it was two months ago or so.
Yeah.
Uh, when it came for us, before us the last time. And she offered to, to take the sign that you have and kind of hold it where you wanted to put it and take another photograph for, of it for, or another picture for us and bring it back to us. So that we can see kinda what you're-
I mean, I will not be able to put it, I mean, I gotta, I mean, temporary, for temporary, I mean, that would be like very hard for me. I mean, you can imagine, you see it like on the picture. I think, I mean, I put that picture of the sign, it just right on top of the door where I want to put it. It's very thin, if you see it like, do you have picture of the building, the front?
I have a picture of the building with the Crazy Oven sign on it, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's right down to the crazy sign, uh, feel like that electronic sign. On other pictures, you probably can see the picture of the, uh, electronic sign, I included that too.
Okay, the other one is for, I believe it's some kind of a car lot, correct? From a car lot?
Yeah, yeah, that's like how it looks, you know.
Yeah, I understand, I understand it, but, I understand it, but that's not, uh, that's not showing us any indication of what's, what a sign like that is gonna look like on your property, which is very much different than the one that that is on, I believe.
I mean, what's the difference there? It's just a twelve-foot sign, it's right under the like, uh, main sign. You're gonna, I mean, imagine it's like a little bit longer from both sides. And it's right between like, I had like two white like, uh, like, I mean, in the entrance, you see like, like in the front, like two white wood, you know, from the right and left. That would be right between it, I mean, and it would be thinner than sign, uh, Crazy Oven sign like three times thinner it would be.
Okay, and-
That's, I mean, that's-
Can you, can you tell me what from the, let's, let's just use the columns, if you will, that are out front, or the white, uh, the things at the corners, corners of the roof? What is, what is, what is the dim-
Between columns.
What is the dimension from the outside of one to the outside of the other? Across, you know, across the whole front of the entrance there?
That's twelve, like around thirteen feet. That's exactly where the sign gonna be, between that two white columns.
And up on the roof, correct?
No, no, not on the roof, right, it's under the my, uh, Crazy Oven sign.
Under the overhang.
In front of the dormer.
Under it, under the Crazy Oven sign, right, I mean, between columns, right, I mean, and it's, uh, it's like, I believe like seven feet between like, uh, ground and that sign gonna be. Seven or eight, yes.
Uh, Jean, this is, Jean, Jean, this is Doug Prozian.
Yes, sir.
Um, the rectangle is drawn over the Crazy Oven sign. I asked him if that's the one foot by twelve foot sign he's talking about and in that, will it say Crazy Oven and is that his ultimate sign?
Hello?
Do you understand what I'm-
I mean, I can hear you well, you know.
Okay, did you hear that, sir?
He said he couldn't.
I do hear well, you know, if you can tell me.
All right, one of the, one of the members of the planning commission called in with a question here, having to do, is yours, is this, is this twelve-foot sign, I believe it's twelve by twenty inches, foot and a half?
Yeah.
Uh, is that going to include the words Crazy Oven on it or you're gonna, you're not gonna replace the Crazy Oven sign, correct? Or are you?
No, I don't wanna touch the main sign. That will be just the formation sign.
Okay, so you're gonna put that below the Crazy Oven sign?
Yeah, I wanna keep Crazy Oven sign. It's like a main, my main sign, you know, and like that electronic sign for my specials and for other stuff.
It's too low.
To put like information, what I have for sales, business hours, open where or closed, you know, that's, we all for that, you know.
This is Pete Cabella.
You still going, Doug?
Yeah, well, I'm still a little confused.
Stand by, sir.
Is, is, is the rectangle that the arrow is pointing to going to be the entire new sign?
Doug, it appears to me is that, as though the new sign is not designated to go there, where you're, where you're looking at. It's gonna be below the sofa.
Below the existing, he's going, wants to keep, Sergio, is this correct? You wanna keep the Crazy Oven sign?
Yeah, I wanna keep, because it will be like very ugly if I will not have any front sign.
So Serge, Sergio, is this correct? You wanna keep the Crazy Oven sign and put the digital sign below it?
Yeah, because we counted and there's your formula, I had exactly enough room to put it, you know.
Would, would that, would that be the same, would the bottom of the sign be the same height as the top of the door?
No, it's gonna be like, you see that two columns right under the my sign?
Yes.
That's where that sign gonna be. I mean, and I showed it to the man a couple times, I mean, where I want to put that sign.
Sergio, when you drew this picture, you're drawing a picture of the digital sign directly on top of the Crazy Oven, so you are confusing us.
No, they're like a sign, not a, uh, it's under the Crazy Oven sign.
I understand that, Sergio, but when you drew the picture, you put the rectangle on top of the Crazy Oven, so we're not really understanding where you want it and what you're doing.
I have a crazy, you see the Crazy Oven sign?
Hang, hang on a minute, Dave.
Right under it, between columns, I want to put that sign. I mean, I don't know, like it looks like a difficult thing.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, uh, just, you know, a good picture would save a thousand words, it would've saved a thousand words tonight. So we politely requested a picture of the sign where you were going to hang it and I, for one, would still like to see that picture, um, and would ask that it be provided.
I mean, I, can I just, I mean, you can't just put it under the sign to see it? I mean, like, uh, it's right, I mean, I don't understand how I can make pictures, so I gotta put sign, make pictures and take it out? I don't get it.
No, all, all we, we talked about two months ago here at the, at the planning commission meeting was having a couple people on a couple step ladders holding the sign up where you wanted it, not permanently, not mounting it to anything. Hold it up there, where it's going-
I tell you, that sign, far away, I mean, it's in a storage, it's very difficult for me to move it around. It's like a fourteen inch long, thirteen inch long, I mean, thirteen feet long.
Sergio, you were gonna show us a picture of it.
That's why the man was there, he saw exactly and then they took pictures too. I, I wanna ask that sign.
Okay.
Okay, I would, I would accept not having the sign itself, but something exactly the same size as the sign, i.e. a piece of OSB or whatever.
Right.
The same size as the sign and, and, and have it held up there by hand if, if, whatever, and to show us exactly where that sign, where you're planning on putting the sign and leave the sign in storage for now.
Along with the dimensions of how far off the ground.
Yeah, I include all dimensions.
Uh, Jean, this is Doug Prozian.
I include the paper with all dimensions.
You can't tell, tell him, he doesn't even, it's, for me, he doesn't have to make up a sign. He could take this exact picture and paste over it with whatever lettering he wants so at least we know where the heck he's talking about.
Correct.
I mean, he can do it in paper, all I care.
Well, he could, yes, he could do that. He could do that, just put a white- But it's gotta be the scale.
To me, it looks like this, this rectangle that he's got drawn on here, I thought that was what, where the sign was gonna be and the approximate size of the sign and it was gonna say Crazy Oven. So that's where I'm confused and so all I would like, if he can't put the sign up, then he can make a drawing on paper, I don't care.
But I agree with Dave, uh, you know, it's very difficult to make a decision when you don't know what the heck you're talking about.
I think you could cut a board to have those dimensions and take a picture and then we would have it the next-
I think you could cut a board to those dimensions, and take a picture, and then we would have it at the next meeting, and it's not that difficult.
I can't hear you well.
Um, Sergio.
I can, uh, hear, I'm sorry. Hello?
Sergio, what we'd like, what we'd like to have you do, possibly...
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Okay, Dave, Dave, can I talk? I think he can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you, yes.
Sergio, could you, this is Pete Cabea, could you possibly get a piece of cardboard, and cut the cardboard to the dimensions of the sign?
Yes, I can do that.
Cut the cardboard, and then set the cardboard exactly where you're going to place it, and take a picture of it, because we're not understanding where you want the sign. And you could do-
Yeah, okay, I can do that, but your people was there, and I showed exactly where I wanna put it.
And, and I, Sergio-
No problem, I will put cardboard.
Sergio, I would also like to see of some dimensions on that, for example, if the bottom of the sign is seven feet five inches off the ground, if you can label that for me.
Uh, this is Doug Prozan again, I'd even volunteered to go down there, I don't look that far away, I'd actually need him there when he's doing this.
That would be great, that would be good, yeah.
That, you, you say that, you would say you would, you'd appreciate the help?
Yeah, if someone can come and take a look on it, so that couldn't be less questions, you know.
Mister, Mister Prozan, a member of the planning commission, has volunteered his services to give you a hand with that. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Now, Sergio, you, you have to understand that we, that we are, that we are be, uh, being forced to table this for another month now, till we see what the drawing-
I gotta wait another month, so, it's another month, so like, uh, summer will be over, uh, you, you, I had like, a person from, uh, Matt, who come, and I showed everything to him, you know, what I wanna do, and where I have to put it.
Who did you show?
Matt was, uh, come, and, uh, I showed him exactly where I wanna put it, from the, uh, Milk Creek, I mean, uh, from, uh, from the city hall, Milk Creek, the Matt.
Yes, okay.
He come with me, and, uh, he made like, the pictures, that, I mean, I don't know if he made pictures or not, but I explained him everything I wanna do, and I put on paper, he saw that paper, I, I, I don't understand what else I got.
Well, unfortunately, unfortunately, we are the ones who are, need to, need to see the picture, need to see the stuff that you were going to do. And we did agree, we did agree, two months ago, when you were here presenting this before, that we would have the information, the, what we requested, we would have that by, for the meeting.
All that information was included, I don't know, I should do it, okay, so you now, I gotta wait another month, and like, uh, then another month after that, how it work?
We have no choice, really, because if the planning commission does not, uh, feel comfortable making a decision on this thing without knowing exactly what we're doing here. And, and, and it also includes clearances from the part, from the, uh, from the sidewalk to the bottom side, but the bottom of the sign, is there going to be enough room, height?
You don't wanna me put this sign, right?
Pardon me?
I understand.
Pardon me?
Not the word, you just don't wanna me put that sign.
That's not, that's not what's be, that, that is not what's being said here, sir.
We want you to put the sign, we just wanna know what it's gonna look like.
Okay, and who can come, and which can take a look at it?
Give him my email address, and I will, Dean, this is Doug, give him my email address, and we'll make arrangements, I'll get over there tomorrow if he wants me to.
Okay.
Yeah.
We just want to know what it looks like.
Okay.
That's posted bond tonight, Doug.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what time do you wanna me be there, wait for you?
Doug, what time can you meet him there?
Um, when?
Tomorrow.
Hold it, I'm sorry, I can't between twelve and three PM, I have an appointment, if, any other time, any other day, no problem.
Okay, standby. Doug, can you hear me?
When, Wednesday, Thursday, or, or either day is fine for me.
Okay, he said, okay, he said tomorrow would be okay, but not between twelve and three o'clock, it has to be before or after that.
Let's have Doug call him, let's have Doug call him.
Alright, well, I can meet him at ten o'clock tomorrow morning if he wants.
Sounds good, ten AM, I'll be in the front of, uh, with the cardboard, so I can make like, uh, I mean, the, the size of the sign, so you can see it, and I will make some pictures. Ten AM tomorrow, uh, at-
Thursday?
I'm sorry, thirty-five, thirty-four.
Thursday, I'll be there.
Go ahead, Doug.
Ten o'clock tomorrow.
Ten o'clock tomorrow morning, you two are going to meet out front there and, uh, look at this thing.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Sergio.
Thanks, Doug.
Anything else, sir, Sergio? Okay, alright, thank you. Bye. Okay, planning commission, people. No, we don't, no, yeah.
I hope I get a, I hope we get a piece out of this.
Okay, now then, let's have, uh, any questions, questions or comments from the commission, I think we already had them. Okay, this matter now open for public comment, if you wish to comment on the rezoning request, please call eight three three one 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 one, extension three eight oh, we will wait a couple minutes, see if there are any callers.
Does it seem like this is taking longer? Does it seem like this is taking a bit longer than usual?
It does. Yeah, I understand where the guy's coming from, he's...
We're, uh, we're done, if you want to move on.
Okay, we have got no more, uh, no questions or no comments from the public. Uh, we will move into our deliberations now. All issues having been discussed here, we'll now begin deliberation, our deliberation will be broadcast, but no further discussion will be accepted by, uh, be, be accepted here. Okay, the first item on the agenda was postponed, as Garlock's postponed till further notice. The planning commission is listening to me, please, uh, the next one is Green Leaf Corporation for the airport hangar, um, to, uh, put a building on the airport there with, uh, eighteen parking place, eighteen parking spaces, in case they ever would need it for the parking spaces or anything.
Hi, this is Dave, I'll make a motion for approval, um, subject to the inclusion of Milk Creek's, uh, index number and the fire hydrant distance, uh, being added to the plat, uh, they have indicated that an HOP already exists.
I will second that, this is Pete Cabea.
Okay, we have a motion to, to recommend approval, uh, for this. Any further discussion on it at all? Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Doug Prozan, aye.
Alright, and I'm an aye. Anyone, uh, I don't think we have anybody else to, uh, oppose it, right? Okay. The next item is for MCH off-site parking up on Peach Street and, uh, Zimmerman Road.
Doug Prozan, I recommend it. I vote that we recommend it.
Pete Cabea, I will second it.
He seconded, Pete Cabea seconded the motion, all in favor, or any discussion further on that? Okay, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Very good. Anyone opposed? Alright, the next item is Griffith rezoning, for the, uh, zoning C one from the R one on, uh, Zook Road there.
This is Doug Prozan, I recommend it, in favor.
Pete Cabea, again, I second it.
Pete Cabea seconded it, seconded it, any further discussion? Alright, I will entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Uh, my, my comment is, um, I, I feel we should be following the comprehensive plan, and there were comments, uh, yesterday, that, uh, the proposed zoning map does call for it to be a mixed use, that law would be part of a mixed use district in the future, but that's not what's on the record right now, comp plan's on the record, so, just to make a-
I would have to agree with, with them, I, I think we, we should have to stick with the comprehensive plan at this point.
Well, that's-
But the future-
We got a motion, right?
We do.
And we do-
All move.
Okay, all in favor of approval for this, this rezoning?
Aye.
Pete's a-
Aye.
Doug's is aye, I'm an aye. Okay, and opposition?
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm a no.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the, uh, last item on the agenda was a conditional use for the Crazy Oven.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, sorry.
How does that, how, how, this is Doug, how did that vote end up?
Three, three, four, and two against.
Good, okay.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realize you didn't hear that. Alright, the last item is, uh, for the conditional use for the Crazy Oven, uh, I guess we're going to table this again, because we don't have the information that we requested two months ago, and, uh, ten o'clock tomorrow morning, that information will become available, or will be taken care of. So we'll table, we'll-
Uh, this is Doug Prozan, this, this is Doug Prozan, I don't know if this is a point of order or whatever, but if I'm gonna meet him there at ten o'clock tomorrow, and whatever he's gonna do is exactly what we think he's gonna do, is there any way to move forward with this by an electronic vote tomorrow afternoon or something? Where I could send around to everybody what he's-
No, there isn't.
What he really want to-
It, it has to, it has to follow the procedures, which means it has to be tabled and revoted.
It has to-
We've asked him to do something, he did not do it, and, uh, for some reason, it's, it's so simple, just to hold it up and take a picture, and he won't do it, so I don't think we should go out of our way, either. Well, I suspect his wife, I suspect his wife didn't explain it to him properly, but I, I won't know that until the mo-
We just did, and he didn't seem to understand it.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
And he, he drew-
I'm thinking to hold him up for another month, but I guess there's no alternative.
Just a sign.
Yep.
It's kinda simple, uh, all he, and he, and he actually drew a picture of it on top of the other sign, which made it more confusing. Unfortunately, I think we have to table this until next month.
Yeah, you're right, I think so.
It's unfortunate.
Okay, does anybody have any other business of any kind to, uh, cover? Any more comments? Did we all, did we all enjoy ourselves doing it this way tonight?
No, no comment?
It's a little tough, it's a little tough to hear.
Yeah, I understand, yes, okay, alright, I will entertain a motion to, to adjourn.
I, I saw move.
Second.
I second.
Okay, we, we, we stand, we stand adjourned. We stand adjourned at approximately eight thirty PM, thank you very much for your time.